Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. I'm going to call the joint meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission and Sioux Falls City Council to order, and I'm going to recognize that we have a quorum of the Minnehaha County Commission, and I'll turn it over to Counselor Sale.
Thank you. Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Erickson, Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr. Brecky.
City Council has a quorum.
All righty. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, from the county commissioners, I'd look for an approval of our regular agenda.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carries. Counselor.
I would also look for a motion to approve the minutes.
Um.
Nope, the agenda.
The regular agenda. I will move to approve the regular agenda. Knightzert.
Second. Jensen.
Been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yeah.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes. The agenda has been approved.
All righty. I would ask the city clerk to read into the minutes the first agenda item.
Item one is a second reading, an ordinance amending the joint zoning regulations for Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls by amending Chapter 159, Subchapter C, Commercial, I-1 Industrial and Definitions. The Minnehaha County Planning Commission recommends approval five to one, and the Sioux Falls Planning Commission recommends approval seven to zero. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good afternoon, Scott.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, County Planning Director.
Excuse me. This is Councilmember, excuse me, this is Councilmember Brecky. Do you have me there as present because I was attempting to announce that I was present when you asked who was on the phone? Did you not get that? Because you didn't call me when you did the meeting agenda.
That's correct, Councilmember Brecky. We will show you as being in attendance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
As we're all aware, last November, there was an election on a referendum on medical marijuana, which was approved at the state level. And as a result of that, local municipalities and county jurisdictions are going to be required to adopt land use, which will regulate where and how we deal with medical cannabis. So there was a task force that was, had met several times in July. That task force consisted of members of various cities and the county, Lincoln County and Minnehaha County, our legal representatives, and representatives from the public. And we had a very good discussion, and out of that task force came some ideas, which were put into an ordinance forum and have been to the Planning Commission. That, and today will be the discussion on the land use. So I do have a general, a presentation, and the, what we are proposing is an ordinance amendment, which will deal with medical cannabis dispensaries. The proposed ordinance amendment that is in front of you provides a definition of what a medical cannabis dispensary is. And then it would allow the use, that use to occur as a permitted special use in the C Commercial districts and the I-1 Light Industrial districts. And for those at home that may not understand what a permitted special use is, that means that if the, if the use meets certain criteria that are outlined in the zoning ordinance, it is just permitted. If it does not meet the criteria, the applicant could still request to be heard by the Planning Commission and also all the way up to the County Commission and City Council. So I will now go over the 11 adopted, or the proposed criteria that we are looking at to regulate medical cannabis dispensaries within the C Commercial and I-1 Light Industrial districts. So they need to be registered with the state of South Dakota Department of Health. They need to meet all of the South Dakota Department of Health regulations and licensing requirements. There is a thousand-foot setback that's required from the dispensary to single, between single-family residences and the dispensary dwellings, or single-family dwellings, churches, schools, daycares, public use facilities, parks, and there is also a 1,000-foot separation between any medical cannabis dispensaries. The list of requirements indicates that there is no drive-through allowed or exterior sales of medical cannabis. It sets forth a maximum hours of operation, which would be between 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. It controls potential nuisances such as smells, vapors, and odors. It regulates the age of the customer that is permitted within the business. It prohibits the use of medical cannabis on-site at the dispensary. It requires a number of plans that would be submitted, which would include a disposal plan for any unused or waste product or wasted product. It requires a security and a fire protection plan. And lastly, it also requires a site plan and a floor plan of the business. So if it meets those requirements, it could be allowed as a permitted special use within those two districts. If it doesn't, it would require additional use permit. So I'd be glad to answer any questions. This has gone before the joint planning commissions at our August meeting, and as was indicated by the secretary that read the motion or the action, it was approved.
Thank you, Scott. The city, or County Commission has addressed this item twice today already. This is a second reading in public hearing, so before I go to questions, I'm going to give the public the opportunity to address the joint body of the City Council and the County Commission. Anybody here that would like to give us their thoughts on this ordinance, zoning ordinance? Okay, I'm going to close public comment then and go to questions. Any questions? Counselor Knightzert.
I do have one, Scott. I think you have a map that I asked you to create. I just wanted to be able to see where they would be.
Yes.
Located.
I, you had requested or had emailed some questions about the locations of where in the, where in the joint jurisdiction we have C Commercial and I-1 Zoning districts, and I have a couple of maps prepared for you. Those pulled up. All right. So this, this shows the, the overall joint jurisdiction that we share with the city of Sioux Falls, or that Minnehaha County shares with the city of Sioux Falls. The next map would show. So this shows the C Commercial, and maybe we could zoom up just a little bit if we can. There we go. So the C Commercial is shown in red, and there are, there's a, I think if I just would tell you primarily, they're located at the North 60th. There's a large area of North 60th and Interstate 29 at the intersection. There's a large area of C Commercial along Arrowhead Parkway, east of Veterans Parkway. And then we have some at the Exit 402 on Interstate 90, which is where the Yogi Bear campground, if you're familiar with that, there's some out there. And then there's some that is located on West 41st Street, almost, well, just, there's some storage units and where Wild Water West is located. Wild Water West is not in the jurisdiction, but across the street is. And then there might be, you know, a couple of odds and ends. There's some commercial property up on North 60th, just east of Cliff Avenue, behind the gas station, and sort of between Cliff Avenue and the County Highway Shop. There's some commercial property there as well. So the next map, if Sam would move that ahead. Thank you, Sam. The next map shows the I-1 Light Industrial. This is a little bit more limited. We do have some that is located up off of Interstate, south of Interstate 90, where the transmission power lines, the, there's a lot of substations up there. That's, there's that property up there. But there's also a large area that is vacant property at the Renner Crooks exit on the southwest quadrant of the, of the intersection of that. And so there, there are, that's available as well.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted it for reference to kind of see where it was going to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Other questions, comments, motions?
Make a motion to approve on the cities, on the county side.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Hyburger, second by Bender. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Look for a motion to approve from the city side.
Move to approve. Knightzert.
Second. Jensen.
Got a motion to approve and a second. Could we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmembers Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yeah.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
I'm going to ask our deputy auditor, did we need to do a roll call vote? On a zoning change? What's that? Okay, so I'm going to back up and do a roll call vote. Call the roll for the county.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Bender? Aye. Barth?
Why not?
Aye. Motion carries. And we're going to carry on to number two, a briefing on COVID and the homeless population by Dr. Charles Chima. Okay. Great. I did. Welcome, sir.
Greetings, counsel, and the city, or the County Commission. It's my pleasure to address you this evening. I'm Charles Chima, Public Health Director. I was with the City Council a few weeks back to give a COVID update. So glad to have this opportunity to address the joint meeting today. We know that in the past few months, in the last three months, since the beginning of July, we've seen an increase in infections and the hospitalizations. As of today, we have about 1,910 active cases in the community, those that are confirmed, you know, laboratory tests to have COVID-19. And we have about 49 hospitalizations between the two hospital systems and the two county area. This, if you kind of compare it to where we've been in the last two years, you know, we've certainly seen worst. The peak in December, January, December last year up to January this year was much worse than what we are seeing right now. But this is the second highest surge we've seen in infections since the beginning of the pandemic, so it's still very significant. A lot of it has been driven by the new Delta variant, which is much more transmissible. So you having, you know, those that get infected are much more likely to infect more people than the earlier strain of the virus. So because of that, we are seeing a rapid increase in the number of cases. But the good news is that the vaccines are doing a very good job because what we are seeing is that even though cases continue to climb, we're not seeing hospitalizations at the rate you will expect, you know, if you were to compare it to this, to the pandemic we had last year. So we're seeing that cases continue to climb, but hospitalizations are not, are not keeping up with infections because some of the new infections that are happening are happening among those already vaccinated. And for the most part, people that are vaccinated are not being hospitalized with COVID when they get a breakthrough infection. So that's a good news. And that's why a lot of our emphasis and focus has been on vaccination because we recognize that if we can get majority of the population vaccinated, then we can very much, you know, live with this pandemic, and eventually it will burn itself out, and hopefully life can return to normal. With regards to specifically for the homeless population, we've worked closely with the shelters we have in the community. Earlier in the, earlier in the year, we did a significant vaccine event. So we were able to get a good number of those that receive services in the shelters vaccinated. But in the last few days, we've noticed that some of the new clients that they have in the shelters are kind of different from the people that they've had in the past. So we're noticing that with the intake of it, they do when people come in. We're seeing that there are more and more people that are not vaccinated in that community. So my staff already have a schedule with the directors at one of the bigger facilities to have repeat vaccination events to try and improve the vaccination rates in that community. The other challenge we have with the homeless population has been around testing. So Falls Community Health being the public facility that kind of primarily takes responsibility for providing our services to that population. The traditional model had been to provide, get, you know, when someone needs testing in the facility, the shelters, for them to come to Falls to get tested. But some of the challenge of recent has been around transportation, is how do you safely get someone that needs test to Falls Community Health? So some of that challenge has kind of bubbled out in the last few weeks, but partners, you know, with the Director of Health and Human Services for both counties, with our office, with the State Department of Health, with the two health systems, we've kind of been in communication in the past few weeks. And there have been resources that have been identified to help provide transportation services, and the state is working on contracts to see that transportation is in place when we need to move someone that is potentially exposed between the homeless facility and a clinic. The other challenge has been around isolation and, you know, quarantine facilities for the homeless population. Last year, we were able to, you know, use the hotels that were reserved to provide that isolation and quarantine services. But this time around, it's kind of getting a bit more difficult. The state continues to provide a case management service, to provide isolation and quarantine facility for those who do not, cannot safely, you know, quarantine at their, at their home. But the challenges are more and more, you know, with a lot of construction going on in Sioux Falls. Being somewhere with a lot of tourists in town, we have very limited capacity in the hotels. So there are just fewer availability, availability of facilities to, to use for isolation and quarantine. So what we're doing more and more is to work with the shelters to see ways that we can do better infection control in the facilities, so that when people need to quarantine or isolate, just like most of us are able to do in our individual homes. Let's see how much of the quarantine and isolation we can do within the facilities where these homeless individuals are receiving services. So we're working on that, and our partners involved are actively working to resolve that issue. And on the testing, the last update I would like to give on that is that we're also working with, Avera in particular has volunteered to help support testing services on sites at the shelters so that we can reduce the need to transport individuals between the shelters and the clinics, or shelters and the ED. So that means that if we can provide testing on sites, then that further makes it easier for them to identify very quickly who needs to be isolated or quarantined, and also reduces the need for transportation services, specifically around COVID. So generally, I would say that we're still at risk, considering that cases are still going up. But hospitalizations have kind of stabilized in the last few weeks. Over there are between 40 and 50 hospitalizations on any given day between, between the two counties. It's kind of stayed steady in the last two weeks. If you look at the trend, it doesn't seem that things are going to get worse, at least on the, on the end of hospitalizations. But we are still keeping an eye on the new infections. So we strongly encourage committee members to continue to observe those measures that will help us to reduce the transmission of this disease because we know that even though those of us that are vaccinated are less likely to end up in a hospital, we know more and more vaccinated people can still transmit the disease, and the person you give it to might not be vaccinated and may have a more serious outcome. So we just encourage everyone to continue to, you know, take those measures, avoid crowds, keep social distance, wear masks when you're in a crowded setting, and then definitely for those who are not vaccinated, absolutely get vaccinated. It's the way that we're going to get through this pandemic. Thank you. I'm happy to take questions.
Commissioner Barth?
Doctor, so I've obviously lived in South Dakota during this entire time, and I've never been contacted by anyone on a contact tracing thing. Are we doing contact tracing? And I've never been sick, thank goodness. And I've had all three shots now, but how come I've never met anyone that had the disease?
So, yeah, you know, we're never able to speak to that in the, in the circumstance. But yes, to the question of contract tracing, the state continues to provide contract tracing services. So that's been mostly coordinated, you know, through the Epidemiology Division or the State Department of Health. They continue to work with facilities or individual, in settings where there happens to be a significant outbreak, including the schools, for example. The state continues to provide contact tracing services and advise people whom have been exposed to try and safely quarantine for the period of their exposure.
Counselor Knightzert.
Dr. Chima, earlier in the pandemic, we had a contract with, I think, a few hotels to isolate people. Right now, if it's someone in the homeless population tests positive, do we still have that in place? Where do they go?
Yes. So the, the state is still providing funding that, so they have a case manager that if you're needing to put someone in a temporary facility for them to isolate or quarantine, the case manager can, you know, use the grant funding available to try and locate a facility for them to get into. So that service is still available. The challenge is capacity. So whereas you have the money, you have the staff that can make those calls. More and more, you have fewer hotels that have availability to even say, hey, I have rooms available to admit people that need to quarantine or isolate. So that's the challenge is, there's not enough hotel rooms right now, just based on, we know that we have a housing challenge, right? So most of our apartment complexes are full to capacity. So you have people who maybe are new in town or have a temporary walk, and then they're putting up in a hotel. So like construction workers, for example. So they're taking up our hotel capacity. And then we have limited, very thin capacity to, to taking, you know, people quarantining and isolation. But the service is still available.
All righty. Thank you very much, Dr. Chima. This is a briefing, so no action is required, but we appreciate you being here. And moving on to our final briefing, a briefing on The Link by Madeline Miller and Bill Early. Bill is, deserves probably an introduction as our new executive director of The Link. He just began in that role the first of September, so welcome, Mr. Early. I, we have a PowerPoint in front of us, and I think the statement on that first slide is power, is powerful. When someone's suffering from addiction asks for help, it has to be immediate. Families oftentimes do not know where to turn or, know where to turn or how to get help. The community triage center can make a difference for so many people who need help right now, and that's why we're here.
That is why we're here. Thank you, Commissioner. And I would like to just say to those counselors and commissioners, I don't know if actually there are any commissioners on the line, but thank you. From all of us at The Link, this has been a labor of love and a labor of labor for probably eight to nine years to get us to this point. But I am very pleased to represent The Link along with my colleague, Mattie Miller, who is our nurse manager, and to tell you that effective June 1st, The Link is open. In a full 17 minutes after the doors were open, we had our first client come through the doors. And she's, and Mattie Miller will go over some of the statistics, which I think this collective organization will find very interesting in terms of where we stand today. So this next item is a brief video that was put together by Mary Michaels and the city team. It's a little less than three minutes, so whenever we're ready, we'll go ahead and roll that.
You know someone who has needed help with issues related to mental illness or addiction. These issues affect anyone, anywhere, even here in our community. The Link in Sioux Falls is a safe place for people experiencing a nonviolent behavioral health crisis or needing care for substance use disorders. Here at The Link, adults can access immediate treatment and referral to support services. The facility is a collaboration of the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, Avera Health, and Sanford Health. Anyone is welcome at The Link. Our mission is to empower individuals to seek care and provide a link to services that will help them thrive. Serving through our key values of compassion, respect, and safety, The Link provides an appropriate treatment environment for those who come here for care. The Link provides crisis stabilization for individuals experiencing an acute mental health crisis who need short-term stabilization with an average length of stay up to 23 hours. Staff help create a crisis response plan with recommendations for aftercare. Another program of The Link is withdrawal management, where individuals receive detoxification treatment for substance use disorders. We have trained health professionals on staff who provide daily visits and who invite individuals to participate in programming here at The Link. The average length of stay in this unit is three to seven days. Our staff will also help create an individualized aftercare plan that could include arranging outpatient treatment or referring individuals to other community resources. The Link also has an observation unit for intoxicated individuals to provide support as they reach a safe level of sobriety. The average length of stay averages between eight and 12 hours, and staff will provide connections to community resources and education regarding substance use treatment options. The Link is here for any adult in our community who needs help with mental illness or addiction. Individuals may come to The Link on their own. They may come with a family member or friend, or they may be brought here by paramedics or law enforcement. The important thing is, we want you to come to The Link if you need help.
And that last part is, I think, very noteworthy and needs to be underscored. And that is, The Link isn't just for any one group of people, anyone who fits in a particular demographic. It's for everybody, and we've actually seen that already. And so we're hopeful that we can continue to get the word out and, as I like to say, evangelize out in the community about The Link and the services that we're offering. I think it's also worth noting, as a refugee from California, one of the things that attracted me to this community was the spirit of community with a capital C and the spirit of philanthropy with a capital P. And that's actually very well-known. This is a prime example of that. And so I don't need to tell you, you know, the city council, along with the county commission, has jumped in and has been very committed to this process and this program. But I will also tell you that bringing Avera Health and Sanford Health together and other partners that we're working with, it really does underscore what a special community we have. So thank you again for, for all of that. Given the fact that I think we have a group of very well-educated people here about The Link, although, let me just move this along. At your leisure, I would just ask you to, to take a look at the vision and the mission and the values. It's important that we understand what was created by the folks who have put this together. For those of you who have not already been to The Link, I would encourage you to please contact me. I'd be happy to show you around. We obviously have privacy issues and HIPAA issues that we hold very dear in terms of the, the treatment that we're offering, but, but would look forward to the opportunity to, to show you more. I don't want to take up any more time at this point. I really want to get to the heart of our presentation today, and that's with Mattie Miller, our nurse manager from The Link.
Welcome, Addie.
Thank you, Dean, and the rest of the team. It's really a pleasure to be here. Thank you for your time. Really appreciate the time on the agenda tonight. I'll let you read some of these statistics on your own, but I think we all know someone that's probably close to us or maybe ourselves that have struggled with an addiction or with mental illness throughout our life. It's just been so incredibly prevalent, the need. And as Bill demonstrated earlier, it only took 17 minutes for our first client to come meet us. So it was just an immediate offering of help right after we opened our doors. We offer three programs in-house at The Link, and then we also offer 24/7 access to healthcare professionals for individuals who need referrals and education about community agency services that are available. I think one of the things that's really special about Sioux Falls, and one thing I'm very proud of, is that we have a really rich network of services in our community, both for addiction and mental health. But it's just really hard sometimes for people to navigate that and to really find the right service to meet their needs. So we do our best to be that person, that point of contact that can really connect them or link them to whatever is most appropriate to meet their needs. We offer short-term stabilization for individuals who are needing to sober up and aren't safe to be out in the community. to be out in the community. We currently see an average length of stay of about six hours for those individuals. A lot of the time, we get questions about, you know, what's safe for you to accept or are there certain people that aren't allowed at The Link? I would say that we're really very inclusive in that, um, we have a set of parameters we look at, both medically and behaviorally, to ensure that people are safe. But there's no alcohol intoxication level we can't take or won't take, we really just look at each individual person and try to identify, are they safe to be here for our level of monitoring? We have a medically managed detox program that helps people medically get through their withdrawal. We know that, um, detox services are hard to come by and that they really often aren't needed in a hospital setting. So at The Link, we can provide that level of service and monitoring in kind of a mid-level of care environment where they get continued assessment, medical treatment, medications, without having to be hospitalized in an inpatient setting. We also have a mental health crisis stabilization service, so patients that are going through an acute mental health crisis just need a short-term place to connect with somebody and get some help, they can come stay with us up to 23 hours. During that time, they have full access to our staff and our programming. We really try to tailor a, um, visit that is specific to their needs, looking at what their safety concerns are, what their needs are, that we could potentially meet in the community in an outpatient perspective. Uh, they can visit with our nurses, our counselors, our peer support specialists, and our nurse practitioner to really try to understand from every level of that person what it is that they need to be successful. Um, we know that some of the biggest goals with this project were to provide positive impact for our agency partners and our community stakeholders. I'm really proud to say that we are meeting the expectations and exceeding them in a lot of ways. Um, we have decreased incarcerations for those under protective custody in jail by nearly 60% since we've opened. And that was comparing the two months prior to June 1st and the two months after June 1st. We have decreased the length of hospitalizations, um, for people that need withdrawal and we've also decreased the length of emergency department visits for individuals that present with intoxication. Um, if they do need to be medically cleared, our ER partners have been very helpful in that, but we're able to continue that monitoring and stabilization, freeing up that emergency room bed for someone who more acutely needs it. We've also seen quite an increase in the number of individuals who are looking for voluntary admission for withdrawal. I think historically, the trend, um, prior to June 1st was that most people that received detox services in Sioux Falls through our prior program were there involuntarily. And so we've seen more of our clients be voluntary than they are involuntary. So the first week of September, we celebrated our 1,000th triage. We're, I think, over 1,300 now, that's an estimation, but, um, our numbers have been incredibly steady since we've opened. We've had well over 200 admissions through our withdrawal management program and, um, we're seeing an average length of stay right now as, for about two and a half to three days for that population. I'm really happy to say we have four very positive Google reviews and lots of really good feedback from our patients when they, um, submit their satisfaction surveys. We continue to score very high in all categories. Um, and I think the quote on the slide here really, um, demonstrates that story. Um, I've been to facilities like this before and this is the best staff of healthcare workers I've ever met. They're professional and caring, informative, and gave me every utensil to succeed. I would totally recommend this to anyone trying to better their life. I think something that's so critical here is that it's our job to give people utensils and to help them try to better their life, but it's always that individual person's choices, decisions, um, and next steps that determine where that person's gonna go on their journey. Um, this slide demonstrates an example of someone that we had the privilege of taking care of, um, many times. They had well over 20 visits with our sobering program, had more than 20 visits, um, at our ER partners, um, between the two health systems, had more than 20 inpatient hospitalization days. They were a client that had been assigned a case manager through the county's alliance program. We talked about this client on a weekly basis during a collaborative care team conference. Um, they actually went to a southeastern transitional housing bed for a period of time. They had more than 20 calls for an intoxicated subject or men down with some citations and public parts for drinking publicly and, um, that individual made it to treatment last week and just got an update today and they're still there. So I think it just goes to show that it doesn't really matter how many times it takes. Um, it's never gonna be just The Link, it's a community partnership and it's a, it's just a privilege to be a part of it, but it truly takes the village to really support somebody and give them the care that they need. With that, I'd just like to open it up to questions.
This is a briefing, any questions from the councilors? I guess my only comment would be, thank you. This is a very much a direct touch to the people that need it and I know from conversations with law enforcement, our sheriff and our chief deputy and our, um, warden, it's made a difference. It's made a difference in people's lives, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you especially, Dean, for your membership on the project team and on the board, we really appreciate your support, both from the city and the county. We're so thankful to have a community that cares so much about its residents. Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Alrighty. We're now at the point of our meeting for, with the opportunity for public comment. Anybody here would like to address the bodies of the council or the commission? We'll give you five minutes, welcome.
Thank you for having me. Um, I gave you guys this paperwork.
Ma'am, could you state your name, please?
Oh, Linda Oliver.
Thank you.
Hi. Um, last week, I dropped this paperwork off to you guys about the vaccine. Did anybody know in the audience that if you take the COVID vaccine, you're considered no longer human because it alters your DNA? Um, and it removes the God gene in you. Um, so that's one thing. I only have five minutes, so I have to do this first. And then, not only that, um, they're suppressing really the information on the deaths, the injuries and everything else that's associated with the vaccine from the public. They are dying, they are dying. Not only are they dying, but they're getting injured where women are having miscarriages at a high rate and there's a lot of deaths, but the deaths are higher now because this is from June 11, 2021. So there are even thousands more, thousands of thousands of deaths. Um, and then there's a lot of illnesses that is associated with this vaccine that they're not letting you know about. And they're making you believe that the vaccine was FDA approved and it was not. It was only extended for emergency use. They're still in the phase three trial, so that means they cannot force you to take this vaccine, they cannot mandate it. And mandates are not laws, so you don't have to take something because they mandate something. Also, they tell you that this is, uh, nature, came from nature, this virus, but it didn't. It came from a lab. Our United States of America government created this vaccine. And anyone who takes this vaccine is subject to the United States government laws worldwide and you are owned by that government. That means they can pull you off the shelf, that means out of your home, because you are the one that is spreading the virus. Because it is a bioweapon, it is a shatter, and you will be the one who's causing the problem with COVID because it's intended to spread the virus, it's intended to kill the population, not help. And this is your civil rights. They don't have the right to violate your civil rights, to tell you to do anything that's against God's w- w- will. He gives us free will to decide what we're gonna do, even when we sin against Him, He gives us free will. And no man on earth or woman has the right to put laws in that violates your civil rights. And if anyone dies during that time, they are subject to imprisonment, fine, or death. And this was their plan all along, back in April 24th, 2000, I mean, one, 1974, that was their plan to bring about a pandemic, that they could try to violate your rights, take your rights away, and they could try to depop your, decrease the population. And that was their plan and that's what they're doing. I know you can't see this, but that's what this is. Two weeks ago, I came with this legal notice here, gave it to the govern, to the mayor here, you see what's in there? And the city council members. This is to put them on notice that they are violating the Nuremberg Code. The Nuremberg Code is when there's a experimental vaccine, and this was back in Germany when they did the Holocaust. They did, um, experimental drugs and they killed a lot of the population with that experimental drug. They put them on trial, they were executed for doing so, and they're violating that same code here and they cannot, so it has to stop. I did post this, I did file this with the sheriff's department on the 15th and the courthouse, just so it'd be on record. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anybody else would like to address the joint bodies? I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Both same side.
Look for a motion to adjourn from the city.
Move to adjourn, Nicer.
Second, Jensen.
Got a motion and second, all in favor of German?
When people call in, we do a.
Oh, we're gonna do a roll call.
Councilmembers Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nicer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.